Welcome everyone to today's city council meeting, Monday, April twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty three. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, council member Casey.
Here.
District two, council member Vieira.
Yeah.
District four, council member Martinez.
Present.
District three, vice mayor Silvera.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Please stand for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance by Pastor Chris Henry.
A spouting prayer. Father, we come to you knowing that you are the source that supplies our every need. Today, we pray over our city. Lord, I pray a divine protection over those who protect us, our police department, who every day put their lives on the line to protect us, to protect every citizen and individual. Lord, I also pray for our first responders or a fire department who I pray that you give them Godspeed to come to our rescue and to our aid. And again, protect them as they rescue and protect us daily basis. Father, for our city, may we turn to you in our need, in every need, knowing that you are our source. Lord, I pray for this council and for Mayor Lopez. They provide direction for us today in this city. And may our hearts all cry out to you, Father, crying out for the forgiveness that we all need through your son, Jesus Christ. Pray this all in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Today, we will be having two proclamations and then one presentation by Love Series. We'll begin with the Cinco de Mayo proclamation, followed by the Love Series proclamation. Have Nelson Gomez step up to the podium, please. Welcome, everyone. Today, we are declaring Cinco de Mayo as a proclamation. Cinco de Mayo commemorates the Battle of the Puebla in eighteen sixty-two, during which the Mexican army fought and defended the French were marching towards Mexico City. Whereas the greatness of our nation principally stems from the rich diversity of its people. And the city of series is home to a significant Latino population. And whereas Mexican Americans contribute daily to the serious community in a variety of ways, including leadership and dedication to entrepreneurship, participation in cultural and artistic offerings, and commitment to the community and service, which all help to enhance the quality of life for all citizens. And whereas the city of series works to highlight and educate about the traditions and the customs of Mexico. Whereas the brave heroes of the Battle of Mi Puebla are celebrated examples of a great courage, dedication, and hard work. Now, therefore, I Javier Lopez, mayor of the city of series, on behalf of the city council, Vice Mayor Brett Severa, council member James Casey, Rosalinda Elviera, and Daniel A. Martinez do hereby proclaim today, May fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Cinco de Mayo in the city of the series. And this will be received by Nelson Gomez. Do you have any comments?
Mister Mayor, on behalf of South Modesto Businesses United and the community of Hispanics in the city of series, we're honored to receive this proclamation. And council members, we really appreciate you recognizing that specific event. We invite you all, we have a parade on the sixth of May on Cross Landing Road. We have one every year and we hope to have a lot of people attend and to celebrate this very special day. So thank you very much again for the proclamation.
Grandy, if you mind stepping up, please. Declaring April twenty ninth as Love Series. Whereas volunteers transform limited resources into unlimited possibilities, as well as offering love and compassion, providing leadership and hope, bringing families and communities together and turning dreams into realities. Love series desires to make a difference by serving people in the serious community. And whereas on Saturday, twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, an army of volunteers with churches, organizations, businesses, and community at large go out into series to make a difference by serving real people one-on-one. Inspiring, leading, loving, and demonstrating kindness, meeting needs, and impacting those who live and visit series. Whereas inspired by the love, volunteers will serve through blotting out blight one block at a time. Sharing time with lonely seniors, collecting canned food for the hungry, helping with chores and coming alongside agencies that impact so many lives for good. Now, therefore, I Javier Lopez, mayor of the city of series, on behalf of the city council, Vice Mayor Brett Severa, council members James Casey, Rosalinda Elviera, and Daniel A. Martinez do hereby proclaim April twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Love Series Day in the city of series and urge all citizens to show their support for this event. Congratulations.
Since we are presentation next, I just figured I would thank you and do our presentation at the same time. So Mister Mayor, our city council members and our city staff, tonight, we are here on behalf of Love Series. Last year, the city donated two thousand five hundred for this amazing event, and we are asking for the same this year. We currently have fifteen projects scheduled. And I counted just before I came here today, we have about two hundred and eight volunteers who have committed so far. Last year, we had two hundred and forty, but we still have a week left. And last year, we had a lot of people sign up at the last minute and show up that day. So we're hoping to go past that. Some of our projects this year are going to include, and I feel like Mister Mayor has mentioned some of our
Sorry about that.
No, that's great. Thank you. Some serious trash abatement, we're going to do sidewalk cleanups along the canals on the sidewalk sides. Strawberry Park cleanup, first responders vehicle wash, which will include fire trucks, sheriff cars, serious police cars, and any medical ambulances that show up. George Costa baseball field cleanup project, partnership for healthy children playground repairs. We had wanted to go down and do the river bluff down underneath by the river, but because of the flooding and the water, we've moved it to the upper portion, so it's now going to be the soccer field area. The Lutasi soccer field cleanup. We're doing affirmation rocks for the community garden. First responder thank you cards, domestic violence go bags sponsored by Sir Optimist. Pet food collection for the local animal shelter. Ending up the downtown area, which is perfect timing since the street fair follows the following weekend. Get it all nice and cleaned up for the street fair. Series high school mural paint project. Our series librarian is doing a read in for families that day. And then we have a greeter program for some of our volunteers who can't physically do the projects, but want to be a part of it. So these are just some of the projects that we have planned for that day. Love series is scheduled this weekend, and we are in the process of picking up all of our supplies and equipment, which are needed for the projects. Although our committee consists of volunteers and many donations have been given, we still have expenses that need to be covered by sponsorship, such as registration, we do pay registrations to Love Stausaw County for to cover our insurance and website. Last year, we had donations from Burtalotti disposal, but this year we are going to have to pay for the dumpster. Trash grabbers, the city of series was very generous last year. They gave us some trash grabbers and some trash bags and some gloves. But this year, we wanted to purchase some as well because we have more cleanup projects this year than we did last year. So we have purchased some of those items. Unfortunately, a few of our large signs, the four by eight signs have been stolen. I don't know who would want love Siri signs, but they have disappeared. And so we will have to replace those for next year. Plus, several of our signs are getting very worn out, so there's a lot of wear and tear. So we will have to replace a few for next year as well. Last year and this year, we did put out a lot of yard signs, so next year we will have to replace those as well. We do provide a banner for our sponsors and our projects. We do need to purchase supplies for some of our projects, such as paints, rocks, cards, gloves, and many other items. Plus, our domestic go bags will have to be purchased. Last year, we tried to remove the signposts ourselves, and we found out there's this fancy little tool that's called a T post removal. This year, we would like to purchase one so that it will make it easier for us to remove all of our signs. And our T shirts, the T shirts that promote Love Series. We're very fortunate to have a church who is going to donate two thirds of the cost of the shirts. However, we are paying for one third of the cost of the T shirts. So that last year, they were completely a hundred percent donated. This year, we do have a cost involved in that. And such of small items, such as our zip ties, gloves, signposts, stickers, et cetera. There's a lot of costs involved, and although we do have a few sponsors already, we're asking for the city of series to sponsor us as well. Alliance Club is donating breakfast burritos, Costless is donating water, Code Enforcement is donating coffee and donuts. And all of our volunteers donate their time. We're very fortunate that sponsors and donations this year keep some of our expenses down. But the reality is, we still have other expenses and we need funding to finish out this year and prepare for next year. We are excited to see how the projects will come together and be completed. We are humbled by all of the volunteers and the committee for volunteering their time. If there is a way that city of series could in the future add Love Series, since we plan on doing this the last Saturday every year into the budget, we would appreciate it. But any donation that series can give to us would be much appreciated. Any questions?
Any questions?
I didn't have my glasses, so if I was doing this.
That was a part of your presentation, correct?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Anybody have any questions? Doesn't look like it.
I'm gonna make it short and sweet. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. We now move on to citizens communications. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes, resolution two thousand and seven one oh six. For expression of non-agenda items, matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda, unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside of the chamber doors. We now open citizens communication for those that are in the room. Is there anybody that would like to speak? I do have some yellow cards. Maybe I'll begin with that. General citizens communication. We'll begin with Gavin. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protim, council members, city staff and community, Gavin Klein, Congressman Duarte's office. Quick update. Thank you to the city of the series, series chamber, Santa Salsa Latino Chamber, Senator Alvarado Gill, Assembly Member Alanise, Supervisor Condit, Mayor Lopez, and other council members for having the series legislative breakfast last Friday. It was an amazing turnout and a great opportunity for the community to hear from their elected officials and ask questions about our district. Congressman Duarte had the honor of welcoming the Central Valley Honor Flight to the U.S. Capitol this past week. Since the inaugural flight in two thousand and thirteen, the Central Valley Honor Flight has been sent countless veterans to Washington DC to meet their policymakers, see the sights, and receive the recognition they truly deserve. On Wednesday, Congressman Duarte participated in the House Natural Resources Committee Oversight Hearing, examining the budget for the Department of Interior. Congressman Duarte was able to question Secretary Helen about the federal government failed approach to water policy here in the state of California in the regulatory hurdles blocking water storage and how to improve effective cooperation between the state and federal government. The Clean Water Act is an essential piece of legislation that ensures clean water for every American. However, the implementation of the Clean Water Act has a significant room for improvement. Congressman Duarte is committed to both protecting our access to clean water and ensuring that our farmers are not overburdened with the regulatory uncertainties. As we approach the summer, we are looking at the potential of flooding here in the valley. Congressman Duarte and our staff are dedicated to mitigating the impacts of flood damage and ensuring that our valleys will not have to deal with these floods again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Justin Barkus, come on up.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Justin Barkus, and tonight I am here on behalf of Assembly Member Juan Alanise, representing Assembly District Twenty-two in the California Legislature. So I'm here today because we had the opportunity to recognize a very important individual last month, last month being Women's History Month. Every year, in observation of Women's History Month, each member of the legislature is given the opportunity to recognize a woman from their respective districts for their achievements. Last month, our honoree was an individual that sits here before you all today, one that sits on this very diet step in front of us all here. Rosalinda Vieira is the first Latina councilwoman in the city of series, breaking down barriers and paving the way for more individuals in our community to get involved in local politics. Her dedication to public service and the community has been inspiring to many, but her achievements don't stop there. Rosalinda also works as a student success specialist in Modesto Junior College Agriculture Department, where she helps students achieve their academic careers and goals. Her passion for education and mentorship has made a tremendous impact on countless students who have come through her office. And on top of all this, Rosalinda is a small business owner, proving that no obstacle can stifle her ambition and determination to make a positive impact in this community. Rosalinda, you are a trailblazer and a role model for all women. Your tireless work ethic, dedication to community service, and a commitment to education have made a significant difference in the lives of so many. You are truly an inspiration, and I am honored to recognize you today on behalf of Assembly Member Alanise as Assembly District Twenty-two's woman making history. With all that being said, I do have a pin here for you this evening. You want to come and get your lapel pen, and I would like to read to everyone what it says here. It says, "It is our honor to celebrate your accomplishments and service to the people of California. We ask that you accept this gift and to wear with pride as a two thousand and twenty-three California woman making history." Rosalinda Vieira.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Justin.
So now, since I still have about two minutes, I would like to give a legislative update here. So going into the politics of things now, Assembly Member Alanise has been fortunate enough to really work across the island Sacramento with the established relationship we have built there in the Capitol. We've been able to pass eight bills unanimously through their various committees, their rightful committees. One of those being the Naveg Sports Act that Bill passed a couple of weeks ago on the assembly floor, passed unanimously by the lower house of the legislature. It's now in the state senate, and we're hoping to make it to the governor's desk by the end of the year. Also, if many of you have heard, there's an epidemic right now, and it's not COVID, it's fentanyl. We're losing two people a week in this county. We're losing hundreds a week throughout the state. And it's a tragedy what is happening. We've been working really hard to get this issue addressed throughout the state, and we've actually made headway, and there's going to be a special hearing on fentanyl legislation happening Thursday in the Public Safety Committee. We really urge you folks to reach out to our district office or reach out to me directly. I'd be happy to provide you whatever information you need to provide input on some of the bills that are going to be heard that Thursday. Or if you want to just have some insight and really see how things run in Sacramento, what the assembly members up against in terms of the rhetoric that's being pushed on fentanyl. Please tune in and please reach out to our office, and we'd be able to answer any questions that you guys have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Justin. Destiny Suarez.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. I would like to briefly introduce myself to everybody. My name is Destiny Suarez, and I am here on behalf of Senator Alvarado Gill. I was just going to pretty much say that, again, thank you for the legislative breakfast that the senator was able to attend with all the other representatives. And I am here, and I hope to be here for the next council meetings. And I am a resident of series, so I'm very proud to be here as a resident and a representative of her. And if anybody has any questions for me, I will be in the back of the card.
Thank you, Destiny. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak? Is there anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
I believe you have a document for the record.
Yeah, we did get an email, a public comment emailed in. It is from Alvaro Franco, and it states, "I am in favor of removing the food truck slash vendor limit for all events in series. To start, food trucks and vendors offer a unique opportunity for low-income entrepreneurs to start a business without the high costs associated with brick and mortar establishments. People in series are already struggling with high cost of rent or mortgages, and adding additional hurdles towards creating a business is only deterring businesses from propping up in our town in the first place. Secondly, food trucks and vendors provide affordable food options for residents and visitors, and the fact that the business is a food truck does not deter people from making the drive to series to spend their money here. Lastly, while brick and mortar business, as well as residents, may oppose food trucks as unfair competition because they do not have to pay rent, fair share of taxes, or other overhead costs, here's a short list of businesses that went from food trucks to thriving brick and mortar businesses and paying their fair share of taxes. Korea Tacos, this popular food truck in Los Angeles that serves gourmet tacos opened a brick and mortar restaurant in two thousand and eighteen. Fish Lips Sushi, this sushi-focused food truck in San Diego now has a brick and mortar location. The Chairman, this San Francisco-based food truck that serves Asian-inspired steamed buns opened a restaurant in two thousand and fifteen. Curry Up Now, this Indian street-food-focused food truck in San Francisco now has multiple brick and mortar locations. Lobster Truck, this lobster roll food truck in Los Angeles opened a brick and mortar location in two thousand and seventeen. Nom Nom, this Vietnamese bami sandwich-focused food truck in Los Angeles opened a brick and mortar location in two thousand and fifteen. Raleigh Roddy, this Bay Area-based food truck that serves rotisserie chicken and pork now has a brick and mortar location. The Flying Pig, this Orange County-based food truck that serves Asian-inspired street food opened a brick and mortar location in two thousand and fourteen. The Slider House, this San Francisco-based food truck that serves gourmet sliders opened a restaurant in two thousand and sixteen. Allowing food trucks and vendors to operate without limits can create a vibrant food scene and attract visitors to series, which benefits both entrepreneurs and the local community. So please consider removing the food truck slash vendor limit.
Thank you very much. Citizen communication is now closed. Is there any conflicts of interest from the council? For the consent calendar? No. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine of nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual, council member, or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a single rule, by a roll call vote. Is there anyone in the council would like to pull a consent item for the discussion? You're not. Are there anyone in the public that would like to pull a consent item for the discussion? Five and nine? Is that the same one, sir?
Mayor.
Sorry, hold on, hold on, one second.
Point of order, any comments made from the public should be at the podium.
Step to the
that are not here can hear.
There should be no comments. It should be a question of which item would you like to
And it is a question.
No, I'm saying that if you have an item that you want to pull.
No, no, no.
Go ahead and pull.
I had my hand up. Everybody had their faces down.
One second, hold up. I run the meeting, not you. I'm asking you a question. Is there an item that you would like to pull, yes or no? And if it is, which number is it?
Twenty twenty-three, ten seventy-six. But I had a question for the council.
Hold up. Well, you can ask a question. Hold up, hold up. Did I say you can speak? Give me a second. That's number eleven?
Yes, sir.
You cannot, you're not taking over this meeting, okay? Just give me a second. I will respect you, but please hold on for one second. That is a public hearing, so we're not there yet. So any items on the consent calendar? Is there any items on the consent calendar that you would like to pull, sir?
Yeah, twenty twenty-three, ten seventy-six.
That's a public hearing item. That's number eleven. Yes.
All right, excuse me.
That's okay. It's okay. So unless, unless there is an item that you want to pull. One through nine? So one through nine? Okay, one through nine. That's correct. That's, I'm sorry, you were confusing me for a second. Sorry about that, council member. Any items one through nine that you would like to pull?
No.
Okay, please have a seat.
But I had my hand up.
I understand that we are, we are point of order, or I will have you removed.
Oh, that's really nice. That'd be nice for the police department.
Don't be talking back to me like that, sir. I gave you an opportunity to pull a consent item, and you're refusing to listen to me. I am the chair of this, I am the chair. Point of order.
Mayor, can you please
Sir, going back, going back to the other gentleman that was, wanted to pull some items, sir, what was it again? Five and nine? Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I get the individual's name that pulled five and nine?
Oh, yes, please. For the record, you please step up to the podium so we can do this the normal way, sir. You said, just go ahead, just go ahead and just state your name, and then you can say one or nine. Thank you.
Dave Pratt, a series. Generally, you vote on the other ones before we do those two, but okay. Five. Are you still looking at doing other than gravel like walnut shelf? As long as they
No, there should be no questions asked until we, I'm asking you, you want to pull five and nine. She just wants your name for the record, sir. I'm sorry about that. We haven't gotten there yet. That's fine. That's fine. We haven't gotten there. Thank you. Sorry about that. Just a city clerk. It's, don't worry about it. You're fine. You're fine. Trust me. You're fine. No worries. Okay. Okay, council member wants item number six. So it looks like five, six, and nine are being pulled by the public and council members.
Which council member is pulling six?
He is pulling number six, yes.
Casey.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve items one through four, seven and eight of the consent calendar.
Second. Roll call, please.
Council member Casey.
Hi.
Council member Vieira.
Hi.
Council member Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. Onto item number five. Mister Pratt. Thank you.
Dave Pratt is serious. We'll get this straightened out yet. I just want to know if you're still looking at doing other than gravel as long, as long as they maintain that property. At your last meeting, you were, it was brought up that maybe using walnut shelves instead of gravel. Are you still looking at those alternatives also?
Christopher, is that a yes? Let me have him grab that microphone to answer.
I'll go ahead and jump in. That's, that's a yes, and it is indicated as such in the staff report.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Alex. I appreciate it. Still on number five, sir.
John Warren, city of series, number five. My question is, the vote tonight, if the vote does take place on this ordinance, will that approve it completely and change the ordinance as it was written, or is there going to be a future hearing?
He's asking if this, being this is the second reading, is this the final reading for adoption? Is that his?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, that is.
So if it's voted on tonight, then it's going to pass.
Correct. Yes, sir. Thank you. Is there any additional comments or questions for item number five? Do we have to replace the battery on that?
Yes.
Okay, as she's doing that, item number five. No, there's no additional. Council member? No additional questions?
Turn it on.
Go ahead, sir.
My, my question is, really, this is brought up for a particular business concern, and it seems to be a broad ordinance be covering the whole city, and I to be covering the whole city, and, and I, I think it's last week, or two weeks ago, I asked the definition of overflow parking. And so, you know, it, it opens up a kind of a can of worms if we don't specifically define what over, you know, if, if the store is allowed to have ten, now they want twelves, and they just add two. I understand the concept is to take care of the overflow parking of the business on Hackett Road. Although I was there this weekend, and there were plenty of spots inside the, the, of the park, of the marketplace. And of course, they had to pay five dollars to park there. But again, I, I think it's too general, an ordinance to pass. It needs to be, if we want to identify the one business, then that would probably be okay, but it just seems to be opening up a can of worms. That's that's.
Thank you, council member. I appreciate it.
Make a motion to approve item five of the consent calendar.
Is the motion on the table? Second. If the motion, there's a motion on the table in a second? Roll call.
Councilmember Casey.
No.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes four one.
Moving on to item number six, Pratt. That is your item as well, I believe. Oh, I'm sorry, that's Casey. Oh, Casey, sir, my apologies.
Yeah, my, my question is, the Lions Park's not listed there at all, you know? And that's, that's the reason I pulled. Don't, all the other parks seem to be listed as maintenance, and the Lions Park is already a weed mess. I just wonder why the Lions Park can't be regularly mowed, the appearance of the sidewalk and such. That's why I pulled number six.
Sam.
Mayor. Mr. Casey, I'll definitely look into, look, look into your request. I'll have staff look into the condition of Lions Park and see if it needs any attention this week.
Thank you, Sam. Councilmember, she has just pressed her button. Go ahead.
I just want to see if we had addressed the issue that came up this week regarding the bathrooms not getting locked at Strawberry Fields, and which is resulting in vandalism in the bathrooms and some drug paraphernalia taking place. I just want to make sure that's been resolved.
Sam. Your fire.
Councilmember Vera, I have reached out to the facility staff to find out exactly what our, our security on tell was doing. And for now on, we're gonna have our, we're gonna be managing the agreement on hand. We're gonna meet with them once a month to determine exactly what their logs is. We need them to provide us our, the daily log for closing the parks and opening the parks. So we're definitely looking into that.
Thank you, Sam.
You're welcome.
Absolutely.
Sam, do they open the park, or it looks like city official or city employees are opening the parks, or at least the park across near my house?
No, you're absolutely right. My apologies. They, they do close the parks, but we open them at, in the morning.
Thank you, Sam. Is there any additional questions from the public on item number six? Okay, bring this back to the council for a motion.
Make a motion to accept item six of the consent calendar.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Moving on to item number nine, Brett.
Dave Pratt of Series. Resolution twenty twenty-three forty-eight, it says approving a budget amendment to transfer funds from the Board of State and Community Corrections Officer Wellness and Mental Health Grant Allocation Fund to the General Fund. Does that mean that's gonna, you, the only way you can allocate those funds for the officers is through the, through the General Fund? Or is just another excuse to move funds to the General Fund to use as you please?
Collins. Yeah, yeah, I answered to that, sir. I doubt it's an excuse, but sure you have an answer.
That is a finance question I'm gonna kindly defer to Director.
I missed, I misspoke. I'm sorry. So now, now you get to answer that question.
Yeah. So those funds were placed into a special account, and any expenditures for the police department come out of the General Fund. So we're, we're simply moving the money from that account to the General Fund to pay for these expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Pratt. Okay, is there any other additional questions from the public on item number nine? Council, any questions? Okay, I see no questions. Go ahead.
Move to approve number nine, consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Vice Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to unfinished business. Resolution number twenty twenty-three, adopted in concurrence with Stanislaus Urban County Consortium, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, CDVG, and Home Annual Action Plan in support of submissions to housing and urban development. Mr. Home, this one's yours.
I have a presentation to share. One moment, please.
Thank you.
Okay, I think it's showing now. We're still given overview. I'm going to talk about the timeline or the annual action plan, the basic criteria for a project, the comments that were shared at a recent community meeting, and our staff recommendation. The county's public comment period is March thirty-first through May first. We're in this comment period right now, and the public comments that were received by staff at the community meeting last week will be pleasure of the coun, of the council included in our comments to the county as they prepare the final annual action plan to, to be submitted to housing and urban development. The county submits this plan to HUD, and if there are any projects that we need to do environmental review for, new ideas, those could be reviewed during the summer, and and HUD is expected to respond to our project list in October. Here are some criteria that we need to keep in mind as we propose projects for a CDVG fund or home fund usage. We need to know the population that has benefited from the project, the estimated cost, the geographic boundaries, and a project description. And I'd like to share the, the comments that were shared with us at the community meeting, so I'll just list them off here. They include sidewalks south of Lawrence on Ninth and Ten Streets, speed bump or traffic control, Smyrna Park improvements, street lighting in high-crime areas, first-time homebuyer program, perhaps using CDVG funding. We already use home funding for this. Solar panels on affordable housing or apartments, construction of ADUs, those are accessory dwelling units, rental assistance program similar to San Jose's plan for veterans and low income, local churches to build ADUs and then rent them for temporary housing, a housing rehabilitation program, for example, to install dual-pane windows, solar panels, and energy efficiency upgrades, and home funds to be used for impact fees in targeted areas. These are ideas. They haven't been vetted yet. In order to vet these ideas, we need to share them with our, our counterparts at Stanislaus County and put together a plan and see if it's eligible for funding. This is something that we can work on and collaborate with the county on coming months, and we could bring a, a new plan next year around this time that's already been vetted. And we can have multiple plans in place. The current plan is to use the CDVG funding for the Morrow Village sidewalk improvement project. That's a project that we're about halfway through and have a couple years left to finish that. Already done several streets in that neighborhood. And it's good to have multiple projects in case a, a project is ineligible after, after we review it or after we do the environmental review. We're confident that the Morrow Village sidewalk improvement project is, it qualifies because it's qualified in the past. So we know that we won't lose money by going forward with that project, that we'll be able to use that money. It, it is qualified. For other projects, we would need to have them vetted. So again, next year around this time, we could bring a pipeline of ideas to the community meeting that have already been vetted and present them, and then bring comments to the city council and have the city council decide which projects, maybe a Plan A, Plan B, Plan C project to have in the pipeline, and then when we receive the funding, we can spend it on whichever project is eligible. And it's good, it's a good idea to have that pipeline in place. And we will need it especially in a couple years from now when the Morrow Village project is completed. Staff recommendation is to continue the, the Morrow Village sidewalk improvement to completion using CDVG funds. And for the home funds, we recommend continuing the first-time homebuyer program. Right now, that program is administered by the City of Turlock. We're in a transition period where in July that will be run by the Stanislaus County. We're working with the county right now on our policies and how that procedure will work. And that's something that we'll have to bring back to city council as we get some document drafted. But we're working together with the county. We're, we're excited about the possibilities in the future. And these are our recommendations, and we'd also like to evaluate possible project ideas, including the list is included as a supplemental for tonight, the, the items that we listed, and any other items that, that the public may have be able to brainstorm with us. That's the presentation. If you have any questions on here.
Does council have any questions? It's Martinez first, and then.
Christopher, I had two questions. The first, and I might have missed it if you'd said it. How long is the vetting process with CDVG? You get a project and everything vetted through.
I didn't hear the question, Daniel. What was the question?
How long is the vetting process to get something to them and get it approved?
It's a combination of the county looking at it. You don't know exactly how long it takes them to find out the geographic boundary eligibility. They could probably tell us pretty quickly if project is eligible for funding based on the type of project it is. For example, a sidewalk project would is very likely eligible in a disadvantaged area, but there are some other ideas on this list that they may be able to give us a reasonably quick answer on. But as far as the, the project cost, that requires getting an estimate usually from an engineer. And sometimes that, depending on the project, could take some time, and might need to be some preliminary designs first in order to understand what extent this project is going to improve the landscape, or, you know, when I say landscape, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the, the project area.
Right.
So I, I don't know exactly how, how long it would take, but definitely before, you know, between now and October is when when the county would plan to submit that. And then HUD will need to, HUD is the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. They, they also have a chance to look it over. So it's a multi-month process.
And then my second question was, do you know how much of the Morrow Village, see, was it CDVG is covered?
As far as how many phases.
Yeah, you said that it's covered some of the sidewalk processes already?
Yes, so we, we are halfway through a four-phase project, a four-to-five-phase project, depending on how many streets we can fit in each phase. Our, our engineering staff is doing the actual engineering work for this.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilmember Vera?
I have a couple questions. I see the county director is online. Are we able to ask her what the actual process is since the county director of the community housing is online?
Absolutely. What, what is her name?
Anna San Nicholas.
Can you please call up on her?
Anna, your mic is unmuted.
Good evening.
Hello, how you doing today? I believe the council member has some questions.
And for the record, deputy director, not, not director.
Sorry, deputy director.
That's okay.
Go ahead, councilwoman.
Um, Councilman Martinez had just asked what the usual process is for vetting a project. About what, what is the timeframe that you usually are seeing when you're vetting the projects for the various cities?
Um, it depends really on the, on the size of the project, and I know that may sound vague, but you know, if there's a small sidewalk project in comparison to a larger sewer project, it could take maybe three to four months also to get it through our environmental process too. So there's a lot of little components, whether it's the council's approval to select the project area, if there's health and safety issues, if you know, community welcomes it. We've had some projects that were, the community, you know, doesn't feel that it's a priority. And then we also start the feasibility, and city staff would have to give us an estimate on the project. So there's a lot of steps to it. So on average, I would say maybe three to four months.
Is it too late now to add things to the CDVG list? Now that's looking to be approved in May at the county?
At, at the moment, we are under the deadline to submit an annual action plan. So technically, yeah, we, we've hit the limit for proposing projects. Is it completely the end? No, we could always do a substantial amendment. We do need to provide to HUD certain things like the, I believe, like Christopher had pointed out, project description, the boundaries, the estimate, the area. And of course, you know, approval by the council on what you, you want to work on. So it's too late for this proposal for the annual action plan, but we can always come to HUD with a substantial amendment with a new project if you, if the city wishes to put it in their pipeline of projects. Now, for the sake of getting our, or think of it as an application or annual application to HUD, and we would need your approval to move forward with this proposal. And then again, later on, we can discuss further and go through the steps if you want to add anything additional in terms of projects. So if you approve it, you know, there is still some chances for opportunities to amend your projects or what you wish to do with your fund, your allocation of funding.
Thank you, and I have one last question, just to confirm, and I don't know who, I think is maybe looking at the consolidated plan, the five-year, I mentioned there was a one or six point seven, one, five million dollars worth of home funding? Is that still available? Is that something we can incorporate so we can utilize that funding here in Series for home funding opportunities, which I believe can also be used for senior below, moderate income housing rehab and land acquisitions as well? I just wanted to confirm.
Our, our annual action plan does consist of a proposal to HUD to do some home, home programs. Trouble is, it is, well, the good thing is, it's our first year as a new consortium. So we won't have access to that funding until HUD clears this through all the policies and procedures and, and the rules and regulations for a new consortium. And typically, And typically that won't come to us if we're lucky, maybe by October, November. But since series was part of the original home consortia as the rest of the urban county, we have access to the city of Turlock's home money that they're still holding and their program income, which is several millions. I can't speak on the behalf of Turlock, but they do have their process to access that money. But it is again, for the whole consortium. And if there's a project, we, or you would have to initiate it with them, whether it's a home buying program, rehab, housing development, land acquisition, those are all possible projects.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I have a follow-up question. So you have a follow-up question? I'm so sorry. Okay. So my question to you is, Anna, Anna, is if we, if we were looking into some of the housing funding, does that need to be in the action plan today? Or can we submit later on in that October date that you're referencing to?
We still have time. For, as a proposal to HUD, we have our home generic programs in the annual action plan. We did upon HUD's guidance, we have a rehab affordable consortium program where we could, you know, pull our money together and then rehab, I may have repeated one of those. And then by law, we have to set aside 15% for a developer if they are a community housing development organization. Now, if none of them apply to do work, that money can open up for use for other projects, but those are legally the items we have to separate. Now each city is going to be given the option to select their projects and we're going to see what's feasible. Once HUD is done with us on what our rules and regs are for the new consortium. So it's not too late. But again, we have to start with something vague. Turlock, on the other hand, has more, what, 20 years of policies and procedures and rules and they have a head start. Not that I'm pushing you guys on Turlock, but remember they got a lot more money. And it, it can be leveraged with the funding that we are hopefully getting soon. But if there's anything urgent that you want or projects, Turlock staff again would be the one to initiate those projects or programs with. And then when we are up and running, hopefully by the end of this calendar year, we can definitely put plans and ideas into place of what your council may want to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez, you had a question, sir?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I haven't turned one off yet.
I see your button, sir, being blocked. Councilmember Vera, I seen your button was pushed.
I guess it'll probably go back to Christopher with the new project that we're working on by Caesar Chavez or is there going to be affordable housing that maybe we want to allocate some of these home funds for seek home funds, especially now that I got Anna San Nicholas on the microphone to kind of do a little push, maybe to push for affordable housing in that development.
And/or if you don't mind me asking, is there a possibility that we can use some of the first time home buyer funds for that if we decide to, if we get a bigger amount of money for it to help our residents? Two full question, I guess.
I'll, I'll try to answer both questions. So or Whitmore Ranch subdivision. The area has already gone through the approval process and that approval process did not include that it be required to have affordable housing. However, if the developer chooses to take a step back and replan it environmental and engineering work on any differences or at least work on the governance and restrictions that would apply of that affordability. Then that would, that, that could be done and it could be considered and we could certainly share that idea with them. And I'm sorry, I, I forgot your question, mayor.
My second question is if we do chase some funds, now this, some of the six million, can we use that for first time home buyers program?
Yeah. So the first time home buyer program is available right now. And have money for it. And in order for someone to access that money, they have to meet certain income eligibility. And sometimes that can be difficult, but not impossible. So we'll work with them and it's really a case by case, family by family process because they have, the numbers have to line up. They, they have to make enough money to get a house, but not too much money that they become ineligible. Sometimes that window is a little tight.
Right. Okay. No, you answered my question. Thank you very much. Any additional questions from the council? Okay, we'll go back to the public. So the public can also have any comments on this. Please state your name, sir.
Hey, Pratt, a series. I know it's mentioned sidewalks. So is this money used also for sidewalks, preferably safety ramps on sidewalks? Or is that a separate fund that and whether or not you still continue with that project or you've given up on it? There's still neighborhoods that still don't have even ramps period. And for those, the handicap and those in wheelchairs have to go farther in the roads to the nearest driveways if they want to get on the sidewalks.
Christopher.
We've been, uh, over the past several years, working on various sidewalk projects using CDBG funds, and we've made a good effort, a lot of good progress on this. We do have some areas in the city that still don't have sidewalks and those, depending on if they're and I'm, I, I would venture to guess that they are probably eligible based on being considered a disadvantaged neighborhood. Those, those could be looked at in the future as a future project.
Yeah. Well, my big issue is because you guys put safety ramps in Morrow Villages when there was no sidewalks. So every lot, corner has had safety ramps and no sidewalks. Now you're finally getting sidewalks and there's areas preferably right over by where I live off of south, south of Hatch and west, west of Booth Road. And basically, those are newer neighborhoods. I mean, they're not that new, but they should have, they should have had these ramps a long time ago.
Thank you, Pratt. Any other comments from the public? See and none. Do we have any hands raised?
There's no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. I bring this back to the council. Promotion. Anyone? I know I can't do it. Is anybody from the right would like to make a motion? Councilmember Casey, would you like to make a motion, sir?
Move to approve resolution 2023 dash 44.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Vera.
Do we specifically ask for an amendment and do we actually need an amendment?
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, you may, sir.
I, I think going, the, the, the understanding is that we're going to share that amendment, that, that list of ideas with Stanislaus County. And I, I think that's probably what we're.
This is what this is right here. This will be included in the motion.
That's the understand, that's my understanding of what you're voting on.
Mayor, a point of order.
Yes.
We can get the motion, the council member who made the motion to clarify the motion to make that clear.
Which includes. Sir, go ahead.
Move to approve resolution 2023 dash 44 with the amendment dated April 24th, 2023.
And I will second that one.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to public hearing. Item number 11, ordinance number 2023 1076, amending the series municipal code title five business license and regulations. Chapter 10, mobile food, mover, excuse me, mobile food vending from motor vehicles to apply specific conditions and to remove the limit of 10 permits allows citywide. Christopher Holmes, this one is yours. And there is a note on here that says this public hearing will be continued to May 8th, 2023 through the regular city council meeting, but we will still be collecting public comments and a discussion up here on the dais. Right, sir?
Thank you. Th- this item is being continued to the May 8th meeting and we welcome the public to come to that meeting as well. Additionally, we'll be having a community meeting this week on Wednesday, April 26th in this building, the series community center at 5:30 PM. It will be in the large assembly room and we welcome the public to come and discuss and talk about the mobile food vendor ordinance.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will now open the public hearing to the public. Anybody in the public that would like to make a comment, please stand to the podium and state your name. Members. Looking for some anxious folks. Nobody. Okay. We have one. We have three. Welcome, sir. State your name, please.
Newly serious. We are talking about 2023 1076, correct?
We are now, sir.
I was here when they voted in for the, the 10 vehicles in town, kind of like a test. I'm not against possibly some more, but you know, we have to have a direction on a number, which will probably come up later. But I think to make series a little bit more attractive than stuff on street corners and trying to take something away from those people that did do this in the past, became restaurant owners or or some kind of a business with food. I think that Modesto really made a, a dent in that when they put that catering truck. I know what you call that down on Ninth Street. I think most of us have been by there on Ninth Street. It's very, very nice. And it, it has multiple different kinds of foods in there. It's a nice, clean. It's got bathrooms there. It's got, you know, what looks like wrought iron tables to sit down there permanently placed, it looks like. And I think as far as making, you know, catering trucks, something more in series that we should find somebody that has some land. Barely close to a busy road or somewhere that people can get to, not too inconvenient. And we should think about that instead of placing our, our businesses that, that want to extend catering trucks on their property with a, a permit, a use permit. I think they should think about this very strongly. So, you know, I mean, each city seems to have their own identity. And I think we need one that's more aesthetic looking and pleasant and but, you know, again, you know, if you say something wrong, you know, there's always those people criticizing you. And it starts with an R. And so my comment is probably going to fall in that category in this city. But I think aesthetic wise, it is, if we can put something up like that, that's going to stand out. I just wish that there was more of those Modesto with their population. It looks really nice. And I think we should think about some nice venue for these people to bring their trucks and multiple different kinds of foods. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Good evening, Council John Warren, City of Series. I've spoke to this issue previously. And at the beginning of chapter 10, which is where the ordinance is written, mobile food vending from motor vehicles. I don't know of any mobile food vendor in this community that is vending from a motor vehicle. Motor vehicle is described in section 415 of the California Vehicle Code. And it has a motor in it. This section that the city adopted has been implemented improperly. Mobile food vendor means a person who displays, prepares or processes food on a motor vehicle for the purpose of selling food to a customer. Not a trailer. A trailer is pulled by a motor vehicle. Said he wants to allow trailers, then that's what they should have their ordinance saying. The municipal code should reflect what the city wants. If he wants that, change it. Right now, the rule is 10. How many mobile food vendors are there on Crow's Landing Road at that flea market? Can anybody tell me? Are there food vendors out there at the flea market on Crow's Landing Road? Yes, there are. There's quite a few. And none of those people have a permit to operate within the city limits of series. This is a list of the 10 locations where the food vendors can be today. They're all filled up. There's none of them are allowed on Crow's Landing Road at the flea market. The city is not enforcing the rules that it has in place now. Before you change and go forward, please do something towards enforcing what you have in place currently. Go by your own rules. Don't change something because you want to change it. You've already changed it. Okay. When food vendors show up at Samara Park and people call the code enforcement folks, they get a response like, well, they're just dropping off food there. They're within 350 feet of a school where they're not supposed to be. There are rules and regulations about what these people can and cannot do. And it's not being enforced properly today. So before you change something, you might start dealing with what you have in place and enforce it properly. Thank you.
Next person, please. Is that it? Nobody else? Anyone from Zoom?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. I bring this back to the council for questions and discussion.
Mayor.
Yes, you may.
Order. Since this is a public hearing item that is going to be continued, the goal for tonight was only to take public comment and we'll have a presentation and opportunity for questions and comments at the next public hearing.
It's not necessary at the moment, being that it's going to be continued.
Correct, because it's being continued.
Okay, if that is the case. Do we need a motion or is this just strictly a public hearing? No motion required? Is there any direction required?
My recommendation to not, not have to renotice the item. We can have a, a motion and a vote to continue it to the May 8th meeting.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue.
Wait a second. AC, did you have the, your button pushed and you turned it off or was that an accident? I just want to make sure. I'm sorry. Go ahead. So Martinez.
I'll make a motion to continue. Ordinance number 2023 dash 1076 to the May 8th city council meeting.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, item number 12. Resolution 202349 approving the use of general funds to sponsor annual love series event and authorizing the staff to move forward with the expenditures. I believe this spades. Councilmember, will you please speak into the microphone?
I need to abstain since I do have two projects or a project I'm overseeing and one I'm helping with that could be directly impacted by the fund.
Okay, you may now leave the room. Thank you very much. We will call upon you when we are complete. Yes, take your Pepsi, please. No, we are not doing a recess. She's abstaining. Sorry. She's abstaining because she has some project. She's abstaining. Okay. So is this Christopher? Is this going to be you? Is this actually, because even though it says spade on there?
Y- yes, I'm, I'm covering.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
There was a great presentation earlier today about the projects that will be done with this. This is a pretty simple request to prove $2,500 city. approve twenty-five hundred dollar city sponsorship for the annual Love Series event beheld on April twenty-ninth.
Awesome, and that's all you have?
That's all I've got.
Okay, awesome. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make a comment on item number twelve in regards to this?
At Dave Pratt's Series, I just want to, you know, did you guys use the funds last year for Love Series?
We didn't, but I believe I Love Series did use the funds. We gave them two thousand five hundred dollars.
And that was voted on?
Yes, it was voted on last year. Yes, sir.
As I brought up before, I asked why Series didn't have Love Series when all the other cities were, and that was because they, you had no sponsors. So you still don't have sponsors?
No, there's additional sponsors besides sponsoring the actual event. Yes, yeah, there is.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Any additional, okay, Brandy, hello?
Quick, I was so nervous I didn't have my glasses. I forgot to mention a few things. If you have not registered to volunteer, we're still looking for volunteers for this week. Go on www.LoveSeries.com. We do have a new mascot this year. We have a contest to name our mascot. We will be voting on Thursday at our meeting. So if you have a name, a clever name for our mascot, please submit it on our Facebook page, or you can email it to me. We also have some nonprofit booths that are going to be available handing out information. We have around ten to twelve booths of local organizations that want to hand out information. And we'll have some games and stuff for the kids to do as well. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that there's going to be a lot more than just projects there during our opening rally.
Awesome, thank you very much. Any additional comments? Mayor, welcome.
I wasn't going to comment on this item, but I first of all, I'm very supportive. Well, my name is Chris Vera. I'm sorry, I should I'm very supportive of the Love Series program as well. Just had one question.
Yes, sir.
Why, why the decision to utilize general funds? Granted, it's only twenty-five hundred dollars, so it's not really a big deal. But as you know, general fund dollars are pretty sacred. Only three things it can be used for, police, fire, and parks and recreation, and there isn't very many in parks and recreation. So I know we have the Measure H Fund and everything to support our great public safety personnel. And I just wouldn't want this to be a slippery slope where the taxpayers need to understand that we're funding something out of our police and fire budget to do something for the city, which, again, it's a great program, and I was always a big advocate for getting, as one gentleman commented, sponsorships for something like this. Because then it doesn't tap into tho- those things. Now, granted, again, it's only twenty-five hundred dollars, and I, and I get that, but I would just caution to transferring general fund dollars into a non-emergency services type. So that, that's all I
That's actually a good question. Maybe the city manager could possibly answer that. Alex?
So why, why the general fund? It's really, would really be the only source of funding available to, to fund a request like this?
There is no other funds? To make sure.
Council could use ARPA funds if it's so desired. General fund being the fund with the most flexibility would really be the only source of funding available.
I believe there's a follow-up question. I'm sorry about the Mr. Warren, the mayor.
Just one quick question. Does the T O T funnel back through the general fund? I, I think it does, but I'm not sure.
Alex?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you may.
Yes, T O, T O T is a general fund revenue.
So, okay, I was going to say that was an option, but if it funds through, it doesn't.
It's, it's all funnels through the general.
I appreciate the comments, Mayor. And to the finance director, that is correct. We're all on page. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Warren, you're up.
John Warren, City of Series, it's a question. Parks and recreation are part of the general fund, and a lot of these projects for April twenty-ninth are for our parks, recreation facilities here in the series. And so maybe not this year, but going forward, because the project is coming close this month as something to consider in the budget for parks and recreation to use for this type of event in, in the future to help fund it.
What I believe one of them is, that would be Costa Fields would be one project. Brandy, is there any other projects that involve any parks? Okay, there you go. There's a multiple. Okay, no, I was just trying to figure out if that was.
There's a lot that's part of our parks and recreation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warren. I appreciate the comments. Bringing this back now to the council for any questions and comments. No questions over here on this side? Additional questions? There's nobody on Zoom, right? Just wanted to make sure to know.
There's no hand.
Okay, look for a motion if that's the case.
Yep. Approved, approved, resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-nine.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
If somebody could go retrieve the council member and her Pepsi.
Maybe four oh?
Yes, carries four zero one abst- abstained.
Oh, you said five?
I said four one.
Okay, that's fine. As long as you got it correct for the record, it should be fine. Welcome back, council member. Moving on to item number thirteen, resolution number twenty twenty-three fifty, authorizing and acceptance of a donation valued at eight thousand fifteen and eighteen cents for waste and recycling disposable containers for the Series Community Center and the purchase and installation of a park bench and waste receptible for Berry Grove Park. This is yours, Sam.
Mr. Mayor, Council?
I see the notes. It's not for you?
No, it is.
Okay, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'd like to give the floor to our public corps analyst, Tony, to present this.
I saw the note. That's the reason I asked. Tony, how are you doing today?
Mayor and council, as you all are, I'm sure, aware, the Rotary Club of Series does several charitable contributions for the City of Series. And they have approached, approached me with an idea for, not an idea, but for a donation for our community center for a number of different receptacles for waste separation for organics and recycling programs, as well as to install a park bench and waste receptacle at Berry Grove Park. And the waste receptacle and park bench, of course, would be for the city's standards and specifications. But all of the donations would be would be for a total of the eight thousand fifteen dollars and eighteen cents. And I do have members of Rotary here tonight. I'd like to bring up Liz Hosner. Did I say that right? She is the club president.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Liz Hosmer. I'm the president of Series Rotary Club. Our club's very happy to once again have a project with the City of Series. In the past forty-six years, since nineteen seventy-seven, Series Rotary has participated, participated in many city partnerships with Series to help our citizens and enhance our community. Past projects include installing the Rotary Grove in Smyrna Park, contributing to a soccer field in the River Bluff Park, refurbishment of Costa Fields, sponsoring our community garden, and refurbishing, the refurbishing of an installment of a shade structure at Smyrna Park, thirty years after our first project there, and many more. As you're probably also aware, Series Rotary Club has a very strong and abundant relationship with Series Unified School District. We're pleased to begin this new pro- an ongoing project to enhance parks in Series and to help manage trash, organics, and recycling for the Series Community Center. We plan on having the bench and the trash cans in parks be a yearly project, so we get to put one in every park in Series. So a big round of thanks to Tony, who's answered all of our questions and been such a catalyst in moving this project forward. She's a true credit to your city, our city. Another thanks to our member, Dan Powers, who is here, who brought this idea to our club board after working at his first crab feed here and watching all the trash bottles and cans that got thrown into the dumpster. And he said, we can do better than this. So thanks, and we're looking forward to working with you in the years to come.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments from the public? I see no one on Zoom. Bring this back to council for any additional. Oh, there's a button to push. Councilmember Vera?
I love the idea. I guess my only question or, or concern, just looking at the initial drafts and not understanding quite everything, do they have tamper-proof mechanisms on there?
And so I believe that there are actually the, it's a waste rece- you talk about for the parks.
Yes, because I mean, we have now people that go through our garbage and kind of sort them in the evening, I guess, is the best way of polluting that.
So these, yeah, these, these receptacles is, are the permanent receptacles. I believe they're made from the concrete, so they, they're, they meet the city's standard specifications. Now, I don't know.
Yes, they are lockable. You can lock them. So the only access is our facility staff. Parks have to get the garbage out, so they're not, not vandalized or
You know where I was going with that. And the fires, as I know, a lot of times we have some garbage incinerator lit on fire. Are they also fire kind of reasons? Besides, it's a step inside. I'm talking.
Yes, yes, absolutely, yep.
Thank you. And thank you very much for this project. I really appreciate this kind of idea and the donation that you guys are putting towards the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve number twenty twenty-three dash fifty.
Second, by council member.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, we will now adjourn for a five-minute recess. If you could please start that timer, Mr. Christopher. Thank you. We'll actually wait for Mr. Alex to sit down. So we just finished with number thirteen, correct? And we're moving on to item number fourteen. Item number fourteen, authorizing an amendment to the City of Series. Purchasing policy to include stipulations for the preference of paper products containing post-consumer recycled content. And this one's for Sam.
Yes, Mayor. Good evening again, Mayor, Council. Staff recommends council approve an amendment to the City of Series purchasing policy recycle content. Preference for paper product procurement. This amendment to the city purchasing policy adds the stipulation for the preference of paper products containing. Post-consumer recycled content for purchase made by city staff. The reason for this amendment is preliminary due to it's being required by the state law. But it's also a requirement for a Cal recycle grant that the city receives to maintain eligibility. Amendment adds the condition to purchase recycled product instead of non-recycled product. Whenever recycled products are available at the same or less lesser total cost than the non-recycled items. If fitness and qualities are equal. Also includes our certain record keeping requirements and the vendor certification to ensure recycled product meet. The minimum content specification mandated by Cal recycle. But this is what I have. I'm ready for any questions. And if need be, I could have Tony assist me.
Okay, we're going to open this up to the public versus any comments or questions on this item. Seeing none. Nobody on Zoom. Going back to the councils. Any questions on this item? Councilmember Vera. Floor is yours.
Quick question, I guess. I didn't see it in here. Just how significant is the Cal recycle grant?
When you want to answer that, or you're talking about the contents of the paper itself, or the grant?
Just in here, the grant itself, because we haven't even had budget hearings yet. So I just didn't know, just out of curiosity, since I do know that this is one state law, so it's not like really optional.
Correct.
But also, I do know that you also implied that there's a grant associated with it. And I was just kind of wondering about how much money is associated with this policy that's being implemented.
Okay, absolutely. I think Tony might have the answer for the number.
Yes. So it's actually for all of our Cal recycle grants to maintain eligibility. We have to have. Policy in place. And I think the largest grant amount is sixty-nine thousand or so. But the total cumulative grants, total costs are, excuse me, funds are upwards of a hundred thousand.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions from the council? Seeing none. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-one.
No, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. We will now be moving on to a discussion items. Item number fifteen. Update on the allocation of the first and second round of installments of the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. I believe this is for our finance director. She's going to give us a breakdown.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. So tonight's presentation will be an update on the allocation of the first and second round of ARPA funds. It will also allow council to provide direction on the proposed use of the remaining funds. So just a brief recap on the American Rescue Plan Act. It was passed by Congress in March of twenty twenty-one to help local governments recover from the pandemic. A series received eleven point six million dollars over two installments received July of twenty twenty-one and July of twenty twenty-two. The funds were that we received must be obligated by December of twenty twenty-four and spent by December twenty twenty-six. Um, the following couple of slides are. The, the US Department of Treasury regulations, they stated that the ARPA funds may be used in four different areas. They may be used to replace lost revenue. Or public health and economic impacts. To provide premium pay to essential workers. And to invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And then they also had regulation, the US Department of Treasury also regulated that. The ARPA funds may not be used to offset a reduction. In tax net, net tax revenue resulting from a change in state law. We cannot use it to offset our pension fund, and we may not use it to pay down any debt service. So the first installment that we received, five million eight hundred twenty-five dollars. Five, five million eight hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five. Uh, we have approved projects from the first installment. For five million, four hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one with the remaining funds of four hundred and seventeen. Thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four. So next will be a review of the approved projects and the status of those projects. As I go through these projects, if you have any questions, feel free to stop. So IT, we had an upgrade to the enterprise class wireless infrastructure. That project is still in progress. The mobile data computers for the patrol cars is a project that's still in progress. And the cradle point wireless connection for the patrol cars is also still in progress. Next, we have police projects. The public safety camera project is still in progress. The police building security system upgrade is still in progress. The upgrade to the police officer's duty gear storage room is in progress. The critical incident response vehicle is still in progress.
Ask you a quick question.
Yep.
On the account that you said was still outstanding, the four hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four. Is that already been allocated and part of this in progress? Or is all that stuff accounted for in the unused balance?
Yeah, all of these projects are accounted for in the five point four million dollar. The four hundred and seventeen is unallocated and still available for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, we have speed trailers that we have purchased and that is completed. Uh, the upgrade to the city gym facility is a completed project. Mobile devices for the social media public outreach is a completed project and additional code enforcement is in progress. It's an ongoing. The city clerk's office, we have digitization of the city's historical mandated microfilm project has not been started. And the, um, the upgrade to the council chambers, audio and camera controls is an in-progress project. Recreation department had sound equipment for its outdoor events, which is completed. Um, the Ochoa Park upgrade, the irrigation sod landscape is an in-progress project. Don Pedro Strawberry River Bluff Park additional trails and walkways has not been started. The robot paint striper for soccer fields is complete and the recreation facility feasibility study has not been started. For engineering and public works, we have an update to the traffic operations center equipment that is in progress. Um, cleaning of the air ducts throughout city facilities has not been started. Augers and other PPE is completed. The grid prune program is in progress. And the lower river bluff maintenance and operations is in progress. For the fire, we had an upgrade to the EMS equipment on the fire engines that is a completed project. Human resources, we had premium pay for eligible workers that is complete. Uh, temporary project management. Uh, has not been started and the recruitment services project is in progress. In finance, we had the reload of the Rad card funding, which is in progress. And the community development and economic development projects were the wayfinding sign program, which is currently in progress. The entitlements assistance and business incentives is in progress. The freeway oriented roof sign replacement is in progress and the seasonal banner enhancements are in progress. And we also have the active military veterans banner program in progress, the hot air balloon festival in progress and street fair sponsorship. In progress. Question so far?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So that covers the first installment correctly?
installment, yes.
All right. I am going to. I, I think that it's important that maybe we have some council discussion on the first portion of it and then go to the public, then come back. Is there any other council members that would like to have any discussions on the first portion of the ARPA funds? Besides Miss Vera, I do have a question myself.
I do as well.
Okay, Ms. Vera, you're up. You're first. Go ahead.
I'll make it quick. Um, I noticed on here that you said the prune. Prune?
Pretty.
Grid pruning program was in progress. I thought I read on last council meeting agenda that it was actually, we were out of funds. Um, so I just wanted to confirm what the status was, if it's in progress or if it's completed, because it looked like it was cut because we were out of funds.
So some of these projects, the actual project may be finished, but I, it's in progress if all of the invoices, invoices have not been paid yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
But we're out of, we're out of funds for that, right?
The grid pruning?
So I would, I would like to highlight that that be something we make sure we talk about whether we want to continue that. In the second round, and I don't know, I forget if that was actually a part of the list or not. I don't, I'm not too sure. Daniel, you're up.
Yeah, I had a question. Uh, on the first installment and the section here where it says second installment, I don't see anything for Smyrna Park renovation. But I do notice that Ochoa Park irrigation sod and landscape installation on the first allocation is one million. And there's an additional one million on the second allocation as well. So we're spending two million dollars on sod. And the pipes for that.
Yeah, council member, mayor, is it all right to answer?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Sorry. I was actually reading. My apologies. Go ahead, sir.
Ochoa Park is quite a, a large undertaking. This you specifically, I understand, asked about the sod. Uh, we're going to have. Grass seeds sprayed on, on the. On the soil. There won't be actual turf or sod that you see at Home Depot. It'll be natural grown hydro seeded. Is that your question?
Yes, that's part of it. And then my second question is, I don't see Smyrna Park's funds on here on either page.
It's, it's in the, the second installment.
Uh, thank you.
Okay. In addition, I believe code enforcement is also been allocated and that will only last us for how long?
It's a two-year program.
As a two-year program, I think that's something that the council should take in consideration if we need want the longevity of the code enforcement. I think that should be on our list for the second round, just for conversation. And then I also wanted to mention that back, back when we had this discussion, we were, we, I brought up the idea of a recreational facility feasible study. But I would like to motion today that we utilize that fifty thousand dollars instead of using it for the study. To be allocated towards Costa Fields. And if the council is okay with that, I would like to get a nod of approval and we can. I make sure that that gets, uh, not only on top of, not only if we, we allocate the fifty thousand dollars, but also look into the idea of if there's any additional cost that it will take to do any kind of upgrades. To Costa Fields. If it will probably take fifty thousand dollars or more, but if I do get a nod for approval, we just, we would start off with the base of fifty thousand dollars.
No, that's two totally separate things. I'm not opposed to giving Costa Fields some, some resources that, once they figure out what they need. But this fees study for recreation and parks is something completely separate that I think we need to look at separately. And it hasn't been done forever. And they need to. Be able to go out and reach out and have somebody look at all of our fees that we charge for all of our facilities and boards and everything. That will directly affect the park and rec budget. I'm, I totally support Costa Fields, grew up playing for George Costa. But I believe those are two different things and I'm totally willing to, to put some resources towards Costa Field, but I think that's a completely separate.
And I just want to clarify, I don't mean to cut you off, but it's not for, for fees. This was to look at locations that we could possibly build actual facilities, sports facilities. That's why I feel that it's very important that we could use this fund for existing. Costa Fields was very, at this point, that place will not be looking as good as when we upgrade Smyrna Park. I feel like we'll be leaving it behind. We have fifty thousand dollars that we can use instead of wasting our money on a study. Not only knowing that Costa Fields needs the upgrades, Vice Mayor.
Are you asking for fifty thousand dollars to go to Costa Fields? Or are you asking for a fee study? Because this is titled as a fee study.
This was, this, this study was not a fee study. This study, when I brought it forward, was basically to see if there's any locations in the City of Series. That we could possibly have a sports facility. That was the initial reason I brought this forward. It had nothing to do with fees. So I'm sorry if there was a misunderstanding. That, that was the original reason why I brought it forward, Vice Mayor.
If I may, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Vice Mayor, I do agree with the Vice Mayor that, you know, we do need to get this money to them, but we do need to. Figure out what they need and what they're asking of us. And if I may, the president of CYB is sitting in the background.
He's actually here, yes.
If you wouldn't mind coming to the podium if we had a couple of questions for him.
Gerardo, if you don't mind, please step in up to the podium.
Oh, I'll get to you, council member. Hi, uh, my name is Gerardo Hernandez and I'm currently the president for CYB. Uh, apologize for the appearance. I just came from my high school practice. What exact questions or concerns do you have?
So Gerardo, do you know, uh? How many fields you're looking to renovate, what the cost is? I know you guys worked with California Landscape in the past and they, they did the big field. Uh, I know they improved the safety, made the field look nicer. Do you have, uh, like the Vice Mayor was asking a plan of? What fields you're looking to, to work on and what those costs would be?
So, uh, currently I would like to redo all five fields. Uh, if you guys don't know, we have five fields, two smaller fields for, um, the youth, uh, which would be like, you know, four, five, six, seven. And eight. And then the bigger boys and girls that play on the fields, uh, the three bigger fields. Uh, the issue is that, uh, the maintenance on them is, is huge. It's a lot of money. Um, as you guys know, we were in a pandemic and, uh, we lost. We had two turbulent years, you know, we had the COVID year. I think we had issues with other stuff that cost us money that we haven't been able to recoup. Um, so. Because of all that, we also lost numbers in participants. Because, you know, parents still, you know, fear for, you know, whatever their reasons are. But we're not getting the high numbers of kids to give us the funds to be able to go back into what we would like to do. Um, we got, uh, quote from California landscaping. Um, and it's a, it's not everything we would like to do to a field, but just the base quote is three thousand dollars. So, I mean. You know, five fields, that's fifteen grand in just field maintenance. Just getting them laser leveled and, uh, playable and safe. For all the players. Um, we do have issues with lighting. The lighting is outdated. It's dim at night. And if any of you guys played baseball or any sport, you can't see a ball, it's going to hit you. So, uh, that's a major concern that we have. So that's a major concern that we have right now. We want to do redo the lighting. We want to do LED lights. And we also have batting cage areas that we need to do. We want like to lay cement down. And there's a ton of things that we can do with any type of funds that you guys would, you know, allocate to us. It would go straight back to the youth. It wouldn't, you know. Like we have monthly meetings as you guys do. We don't have an office. We have to do our monthly meetings inside of our field maintenance. Little garage. And that's the only place we have, you know, a trailer or a double wide or a portable or something like that to make an actual office, an actual boardroom. That's some high on our, our list as well. But like I said, I can talk about, you know, CYB all day long. I will say. It's a tough situation. I understand you guys, you know, you guys budget and money and this and that. My concern is the youth. I honestly, I'm horrible at this political stuff and all this other stuff. I just talk from the heart and I just want to say whatever you guys give us, we will turn back and give it to youth. So they can grow because that's my concern. I don't care about anything else. I don't care about the parents, all that. I care about the little kids that come up and they're happy because they caught a pot fly that day or because they got team snacks. So that's my concern and whatever I can ensure that that stays pure, that's what I'm going to do.
Mr. Martinez had mentioned that maybe possibly requesting a list from CYB.
Yeah, if that's possible, can we get the, the financial list of what California Landscape supply quoted? We'd be able to see and see how we can help with that. And then I also had a second question.
Go ahead.
Since CYB does have a board and it's in our city, it's in our parks. Would the council be supportive of adding a council member to their board and having one of us, five, attend and be a part of their meetings as well? So we can be a little bit more informed.
I, I don't see a problem with that. I would also suggest that if we do decide to allocate any kinds of money. I think Gerardo, you will know that we'll make sure that that money is being put to good use. So that would probably be an initial conversation if you have a council member that is there. So that way he can give you the information, you give them the list. That will also be supported. I would imagine, Alex, does that sounds like something that we think would be a good idea as far as on the staff level, how that, as far as receiving a list? And then you would be coming back to us with whether or not it's doable as far as what the cost would be incurred.
Yeah, that, that would be my recommendation at this point. If there, if there's an interest amongst the council to continue to look into, into this, we could certainly work with CYB leadership to look at the potential upgrades that the fund, this funding could go towards. As to a member of the council on the board. I.
Don't know if that's a suggestion, but I want to make sure if it's not too controversial. Nubia.
What I'm hearing is maybe is it a position on the board, which they're a separate organization, they'd have to make that choice. It's, it sounds like maybe more of a representative designated to to attend their meetings and be informed.
Engaged for this project. A liaison for this project. Council member. Yeah, I mean. I mean, it would, that depends on who we choose, I guess, that would be the case.
That would be permissible. I mean, we can add that to the list of committee, subcommittee members.
Right. Gerardo, I mean, you open, open to that idea, especially during this time where we're trying to figure out what your needs are. So you'll have somebody there who can act as the liaison between the city and then bring back information to the council.
Yeah, definitely. Anything to help, anything to ease the, the communication barrier or whatever.
Right.
A liaison would be perfect because then, I mean, I mean, they can speak our language and they can speak your guys' language.
Okay. And I know there's two buttons pushed, by the way, first council member case and the vice mayor. But as far as on that direction, council, are you guys okay with a liaison? And then also receiving information from CYB, a list to staff, are we okay with that?
Yeah, a hundred percent. Get some quotes as fast as you can so we can expedite this and get you some resources. You know, immediately if we can, but we just can't do business by, let's just give you some money and have you for whatever.
No, yeah.
It doesn't work that way. So, but yeah, the sooner you do it, the better, the faster we can look at it and vote on it and get you some help.
And even if we don't decide to use this $50,000, I just want it as a stepping stone, but I'm very satisfied with the direction that we're going as far as trying to figure out. It might, it's going to be more than 50 grand, I'm sure. I'm sure.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, what we could look at is some phased improvements, some funding to maybe address some immediate need. And then look at a longer term renovation project. So maybe that would be my thought at this point. Maybe some funding provides some initial maintenance needs and then look at, look at the facility from a longer term and what might need to be done. So.
Gerardo, is there any, any things that you would like to point out?
As far as.
I'm sorry, Alex, I didn't want, I mean, to cut you off, sir, but.
I, I don't know that we need to kind of go through that list this.
No, 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 this is just for conversation, sir.
Yeah.
Conversation. Gerardo, any last words?
Uh, no.
I know because Casey does have a question.
Oh yeah, go ahead.
Casey, how about that? Go ahead, sir. I'm sorry. Go ahead. You are up. Well, I thought you had your button pushed earlier.
Go ahead and ask the question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I thought this was a presentation of how.
It's a discussion.
The money and committed and we're going to discuss.
It is a discussion. It clearly says discussion. No, no, it clearly says discussion item, sir. Discussion item right here, sir. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Gerardo?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Gerardo.
Yeah, like I said, if the, whatever you guys need from me, I'll make sure you guys can have it by the weekend. If you guys need a list, like I said, we already have a quote. I just didn't print it out, but I can get it printed out. I can have you guys tomorrow if you guys want the quote for the fields. The portable and all the other stuff, we are working on to get quotes and what it was costing and stuff like that. But it's just, the only thing I do with the city, because I don't know if they're specific. People or avenues I have to go through to get these quotes presented to you guys.
So I, I was going to make, you actually were going to answer that question, Marty. But what I was going to suggest is that you get in contact with our city clerk. And she will get your information. And then once you have any additional comments, you're more than welcome to CC anybody on the council if you want to make sure that the information is disseminated, but she will give you a point of contact for the actual list.
Okay.
But you're always welcome to communicate with anybody on this council. If we decide to do a liaison and the mayor, then you, then obviously that will be what we decide as far as the conversation.
Okay.
So either way, Fallon will receive your information before you leave. And then we'll be in contact.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
He's got two last questions, Gerardo. When are your guys' meetings?
They're their first Monday of every month.
First Monday. And then you'd mentioned the batting cages, you're looking at concrete. Is that public access, those batting cages or specifically for teams only or how are those used?
Because the funds to, to put those up were produced from Blaze and Sizzle. Not, we didn't take funds from CYB, which is, oh Blaze and Sizzle is under the umbrella of CYB. And they raised funds for batting cages. So it wasn't taken out of anything that were produced by the children's series. So that's why it's kind of like a weird thing where we use them mostly for the travel teams and stuff like that, because they're the ones that put the money up and did the work and all that stuff. But if it was money was allocated for the batting cages, it would totally be public because it would be a different entire, entire structure that we would like to put up.
Thank you, Gerardo.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And what I want to make sure is that we're having this discussion in, in regards to anything that has not been started. Is there any particular reason, Alex, why some of these projects haven't been started? And I'm sure you're not going to remember every single specific one, the reason why, but I just want to do, I do think that the council needs clarification on why some of these have not started.
I, I mean, I, I would defer to the individual departments. Some is just a staff capacity to work with the projects. On at least one, I believe the HVAC maintenance, we did bring back to council. There, there did not, there was not an interest from the council in moving forward. So the council may, may want to just reallocate that 400,000 to another, another identified project.
That's 400,000 and we don't just, there was a, or where did Fallon go? So you, so what you're telling me is that for that particular amount of money that was not passed as a resolution, is that what you're saying?
Uh, right. So if we look at.
So. 400,000 dollars.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I was actually listening to what he was saying.
That's okay.
Uh, Ms. Vieira, you have another question?
I don't know if you want to finish that one.
I do, I do, because what I was, I was going to say is if, if we have 400,000 that were not used, is that a part of what your, your numbers are? It is? It is? Okay.
The 400,000 is included in the total allocated already.
But I thought it didn't pass. That's why I'm confused. That's why I'm confused.
Right. I mean, it's included in there, but we have not moved forward with the project. And if the council wants to allocate that to something else at the council's place.
Right, but we said no. When it was the second time, we said no. So how come that money? I guess we got to take it off the list and then you can give us some new numbers, I guess is what I'm saying. That would actually.
We, we take that off the list and the remaining funds from the first installment go up to 817.
Wow. I mean, I mean, it is what it is, but I know that you had your button pushed too. Go ahead, sir. I'm sorry. I just, I can't see the buttons. Go ahead.
So we're all over the place on this, seems to me. I actually came into this meeting just expecting to hear the report of where we stand after the first two installments, not prepared to give my opinion on where we should start spending the rest of number one and, and, and the rest of number two. I'd like to table the rest of this conversation to the next meeting and give the, all of us a better chance to look at different projects that we may want to support.
Okay. But before you second that, I know that she had a question that would be admit to allow her to ask the question. Go ahead.
Following up, just kind of what he said about the not started part, I saw that Don Pedro's Strawberry River Bluff Park, additional trail and walkways for recreation. Is this is not started and has a $75,000 allocation? One is, are we going to be able to continue that, especially with River Bluff now closed? And is $75,000 going to be adequate for all three of those parks?
I think she's, she might, it's like a two people need to answer that financially and.
I'll, I'll defer, I think Public Works is 75,000 enough? Probably not. We get very little, very little concrete for our money these days. So I, if, if there's an interest, we could take another look at that project. And.
And before you motion, I just have a comment. I know that I, in the email, I asked that we need to submit information in regards to what we have been spending. Is, is that, has that been submitted or is that going to be submitted?
I, I was under the impression this is what you were looking.
Alex, if you know, can you please explain what I'm referencing?
If, if I understood your email correctly, there was a, and there's an annual reporting requirement to the Department of the Treasury. And I believe that reporting, we are in process. And we will be submitting that, that required report.
The reason why that's important, because there is some talk at Washington DC that they're considering basically taking the ARPA funds back. I just wanted to emphasize that I want to make sure that we're in compliance so that way they don't give them a reason to take our money back because they don't have a reason why I'm asking.
Yeah, those are quarterly reports that are submitted and we are current.
That's what I want to hear. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, before I second the vice mayor's motion, did you want to assign liaison to CYB since their first meeting is in a couple of days here?
Nubia. Shall we? Is that, that's going to be a separate motion? Can he motion this and then motion that as well? Second? As a second edition of motion. And then we'll clarify for council member Casey because he's not sure what we're referring to.
My recommendation is actually to include this as part of a separate agenda item since it's not technically part of this agenda.
So more of it as a referral, maybe?
Referral.
Yeah, referral. We'll do this, we'll do it under referrals. Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Go ahead with your second.
Okay. And then I'll second the vice mayor's motion to table this to the next city council meeting.
Okay, roll call, please.
Council member Casey. Just to clarify, council member Casey, we're.
All right.
You doing?
No, no, no. They're motioning to, to table this conversation.
But we can have more time to make sure that we have time.
You know, I'm, I'm. I get confused pretty easy. This sounded like a public meeting. I, I thought.
It was strictly a discussion.
But it wasn't advertised that in, in the agenda.
But it says discussion right there.
The finance director was going to give us an update.
No, the, the word is.
So I think then.
I just want to make sure Casey that your, your, your opinion is being voiced. I just want to make sure that you understand.
Explain it again.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So I agree. Expecting report wasn't prepared to start talking about what we're going to spend the rest of it on. That's why I motioned to table the rest of this conversation after the report to the next meeting. And we got a second.
You made a motion, Daniel seconded it.
Yes.
Aye.
And are, are we continuing the presentation?
We are not. We're tabling this presentation until we receive more information to give everyone time. And we'll probably want a more in-depth list and maybe a more focused actual report on these items.
Okay.
We got the nod. Shall we add a stipulation on that? Now we're getting, we're, we're getting very strict here, aren't we?
The motion on the table is to table this entire item until the following meeting. That, that would include the rest of the presentation and any further discussion and action by the council, which when it comes back, the council will have the opportunity to provide direction regarding the use of the remaining funds.
Roll call.
We'll start over. Council member Casey.
Abstained.
You want, you want completion dates? Information wise data? If it's feasible. Okay. It's just a data. It's just more of a, more of information on, on completion dates. So we have a motion on the table in a second. Roll call, please.
Casey abstained?
He abstained, yeah.
Council member Vieira?
Yeah, let's table this.
Council member Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes. And thank you, Vice Mayor, for making sure that this gets tabled.
Please confirm who first and seconded the motion? Thank you.
With that being said, just to clarify, we want to make sure that we do these things the right way and I do not want us to fast any of this. So thank you, Vice Mayor, for making sure that we, we don't rush this. It's very important that we spend the money the correct way. Number, oh, Mr. Vieira.
Just, just as a reminder, next time you, you need to open it up for public comment.
If, if we did not open up the public comment, then we should, because I, I was under the impression that I thought I did. So if that is the case, we need to, we need to roll it back and we need to open it up for public comments so we can hear from the public on item number 15.
Mayor did open up for comments and questions for the CYA, CY.
CYB in that, oh, see.
But if.
Vice Mayor, my apologies. I should have asked for, if there was any additional comments, sir, you have the floor. My apologies, Mayor.
A question was asked from someone, but there was no formal request. So again, it doesn't matter. I did want to make one comment and I, again, I'm not familiar with these funds.
Yes, sir.
So my question goes back to the general fund. Could these funds not have been used for the, the Love Series project? It seems like there was other projects.
I think that was, I think that was a yes earlier. Is that is correct? Yes, Mayor.
So do these funds flow through the general fund?
Finance director.
They don't.
They're a separate fund.
So then, again, I'm sorry, it's just in my nature. We could have used the $2,500 out of these funds for that and preserved the 2,500 in the general fund.
Yes, we could have.
Sorry, I know I do need to be asking him that question, not you, but thank you.
No, you're fine.
If I kind of have an answer for that, if you want, a kind of a ballpark answer is the Love Series funds likely are going to be looked at as a budget item and starting. And they were taken out of general fund last year. And we do it this year, next year, because the ARPA money's, money's going away. So there's other things that we're trying to get done with ARPA money. As opposed to that, something that's probably going to go on forever.
I, I think it's great. I just want you to understand when the cohorts from the police and fire department come and say, hey, they don't have enough funds. You're going to just have to tell them that you used them on Love Series. That, that's all I just cautioned you.
No, we appreciate you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to make a comment before we move forward? After we motioned?
I think we have a vote.
Okay.
The city clerk can confirm, I believe we have.
Actually, I can't see Zoom anymore on my screen.
Roll call was, was made. And it, it passed four, four zero with one abstaining.
Moving on. Thank you very much. Item number 16, pavement management program. This user.
Mayor Lopez, council members, it's a pleasure to present the engineering staff's pavement management program. Mayor Lopez, council members, it's a pleasure to, uh, present the, uh, engineering staff's, uh, pavement management program update. We just kind of wanted to give you an idea of what we're, um, what we're doing about, uh, the city's pavement, uh, surfaces. Uh, from all the streets and perspective of, of not only concerns residents, but also for your own awareness. You recall the, uh, Morgan Road uh, project, it was a SRS, um, the grant that stimulated that and Morgan Road improvements utilized most of the funding that we had for Measure L for twenty two, twenty three. Wanted to make a, an, uh, a point on the staff report. And one of the attachments, uh, this one here, pavement management program that we have, uh, currently on our website. There's a small typo. Staff report, it's the last paragraph right before reasons for recommendation. Instead of two million dollars per year from Measure L, we get one point two. Uh, it was inadvertently, uh, missed. As well as the, uh, the attachment on the I believe it's on the strategy section, the last second to last line, it says also two million. It should be one point two million. We'll make that correction and resubmit it. Basically, if we can turn to the the presentation. Series, uh, has approximately a hundred and thirty four, hundred and thirty four miles of, uh, roads and streets that represent about a hundred and forty two million dollar investment that we're kind of, we're looking after. We have, uh, we followed a a, uh, Stanislaus Council of Government, uh, pavement management program update methodology for determining the conditions of roads and basically, uh, they provided, uh, um, an update on the actual pavement condition of all the roads in the city as well as the other cities in the county. And each road was given what they call a pavement condition index number. And this is part of the, uh, the mission in the staff report. And basically what we do is, uh, we look at this report and we decide what kind of work we can do to help the city out. And currently, right now, we have in the report, uh, from last year, fifty five point nine percent of the roads in series were considered good. And, uh, twenty six point nine percent were considered fair. And seventeen point two percent were considered in poor condition. Now, a pavement management strategy looks to save the better streets. And then rehab the worst streets and then have a maintenance program in conjunction with the Public Works Department to, uh, address the, uh, the remaining streets. And so, uh, I guess the strategy is we, we look for the greatest effective results using the most efficient use of the funds. Last year, like I earlier mentioned, uh, we went and we utilized the funds to do the ATP, SRTS, Morgan Road improvements. This was, uh, funded by six different grants. The federal transportation grant of six hundred and seventy one thousand, Measure L, one point two million. Stan Cog Non-Motorized Fund of two hundred thousand. We had a road maintenance and rehabilitation fund, uh, of one point one six two million. Water, water fund of twenty thousand and a sewer fund of eighty thousand. We mixed all those together to get the Morgan Road done. And we provided a safe route to schools and we added pedestrian flashers and so forth. So we fully utilized, uh, our Measure L funding. One of the, uh, main purposes of, uh, Measure L is that it provides funding for countywide local street and road improvements. Arterial, street widening, signalization, pedestrian, bicyclist and driver safety improvements. Morgan Road kind of hit on six out of eight of those, uh, purposes. So it was a great project. We brought it in on time and you guys certified it per resolution, uh, not too long ago, I think it was a meetings ago. So what do we have scheduled now? Well, what I've tried to do with our, uh, staff and we were half staff for the last year and now we're starting to get a, a couple of more, uh, members of the engineering department. And so to save money, we've done some in-house design for what I consider, if you look on page, uh, yeah, there you go. Uh, there's a list of streets that we're going to, uh, address. Uh, you've got a RFP going out, uh, hopefully the end of this week. We're going to select a contractor and I'm going to come back here and probably the first meeting in June and say, hey, we've got somebody to actually work on the following project. And it includes, uh, some crack replacements, uh, in a couple of neighborhoods. It has a lot of cape seal, which is a kind of a, a, a different kind of a slurry. You add a little bit of a like a like a I would say it's kind of like a, a layer of cushion over the slurry. So it wears a little bit better. And then you have the regular slurry seal, which you see in most parking lots where they, you know, come and coated with an oil. And these three, uh, these three types of, uh, surface repair are either re, total rehab on the, like the full depth replacement or the, or, or the surface treatment. And we have uh, as you can see, a number of streets that we're going to be attacking, uh, probably, uh, the first week of July. We're also, uh, doing the markings and the striping associated with, you know, the different, uh, roads that are being, um, resurfaced. And these would include, uh, bike lane markings, parking stall markings, crossword, uh, crosswalk markings and stop bars as well as fire hydrant, fire hydrant markings. And, and we're also going to be doing some speed bump markings for some traffic calming on Don Pedro. We're going to replace eighty street signs and we also are going to, uh, do, uh, a slurry seal on our waste treatment access road. I'm pretty excited about, you know, the possibility of getting, uh, this summer sprint done, uh, so we can really address that. Uh, do have some you know, uh, issues with funding. We never have enough money to do all the roads we want to do, and I really want to try to make that happen. Our map, you can see, uh, areas in pink are what we're going, we've done the design to address and we still have a lot more to go. And, uh, my, my goal is to keep on it and make, uh, make the streets and roads of, of series, uh, constantly improving and we're open to the public and, uh, the comments and we look for input and I was just wanting to present this to you and the public to give us, give a, like an update of where we're at and what our strategy is. So any questions, I'd be happy to address them now.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up to the public because any members of the public who would like to make a comment on this item.
uniquely serious. How long is this, uh, project where all these projects from start to finish? Is, are we gonna two or three years or?
We have a twenty five year term on our half cent sales tax. But my job is going to be for twenty five years of making the roads better. It might not last that long, but I'm
Yeah, I was just going to ask you that. So what's projected, what's projected for twenty twenty three or the rest of the year, anything?
Uh, I'm going to get the bids from the contractors. I told you that we get one point two million. If I get something less than one point two million and I have enough to do other neighborhoods, I'm going to do it. You know, one of the benefits of having in-house design is that I don't have to come to council and, or, or ask for more money for rented in-house. And, uh, we hope to any, any, uh, what, what I discomfort on driving in our roads, you know, trying to make that better. So constantly looking at and I'm working with Sam on, and on getting the potholes fixed and so forth.
I am.
But that's, that's our goal is to make it better and make it easier and ours moving along with, uh, without hitting the
We'll be looking for you in the next twenty five years. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if there's no questions or comments from the public, bring this back to council for any questions or comments from the council. We checked them. I don't think I see any hands on Zoom, correct? Councilmember Vera. Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to follow up. Um, I know we got an email in from a resident with some concerns. I want to know if that's been addressed. Because we're going to look into it and let me know.
I, I believe we have addressed those concerns, uh, that were expressed in the email. Yes.
Specifically?
We have. Yes, we, we have addressed it.
Have you, have you gotten some resolution to your questions?
Ma- Mayor, you, you, do you mind please stepping up to the podium, sir? I'm sorry to put you up to the podium.
I kind of got a vague answer.
So mind you, mind you, Mayor, the reason why she's asking that is because we want to be in the know what specifically we're told. In response, besides my response to you.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I was, uh, addressed and indicated that they were going to be, um, dealing with the roads. So um, I don't really know what that means other than, um, as I had indicated in my communication, um, I think four or five years from now is going to be, um, catastrophic. And I, I hope that it gets done. I'm my goal here is not to beat anybody up. I was sitting in your chair for
Absolutely.
many years. I know what it's like. Uh, I understand how busy and overworked staff is. I get that. Um, I just, as I indicated in my communication, we promised the voters that we were going to deliver on it. And on my neighborhood was supposed to be done four years ago. And, um, and it was not addressed and to see another five years and think that in twenty sixteen, when, and it was a big deal in twenty sixteen, as those of you who are around. We did not get the transportation pass, tax passed the first time around. And it took a lot of lobbying to get it to the voters and get it passed. And a major component of that was the resurfacing of their roads. And if that was not going to be included, the citizens were not going to vote for it. And to see that we're potentially ten years down the road. I can tell you now, sitting on the other side of the fence, I could never support any type of taxation if it's going to be ten years before I see any type of results for it. I, in my opinion, thinks that that's a bit excessive. So if that means that part of the funds need to be used to hire outside consultants to help manage the project, to push the projects through, um, then so be it. Um, this is the one little sidebar that I'm going to kind of give you. The one thing that I always had a problem with when we had this, the Stan Cog projects where we never took any, um, uh, acknowledgement of what was accomplished. It took so long to get things done, but there was never a sign up that said you, Mr. Taxpayer, Miss Taxpayer, we took your funds and we built this road and this is what you have to show for it. And it was never done. And, um, so it was really hard to get people to say, yeah, I'm going to reach into my wallet and pay for roads when I never saw it happening before. That's changed and you can actually see some of the projects now that are coming to fruition. But the key to everything related to the taxation of people is making sure that you deliver when they give you the funds or else you'll never get them again. And so, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not here to make it difficult. But I do want to see some results, uh, because I, I think it, it's due.
So I would like to say, Mayor, three things. One, out of respect for you as a, as a past mayor. The second, as a citizen who has some institutional knowledge. This is the reason why I responded to you in that way. And I think that it's important. I think that everybody here in this room acknowledges that. And I think that you deserve a little bit more information than just saying that, yes, we'll take care of it. But I will also give Alex some time to make sure that we get that done. So continue, continue with the communication.
If I had, nothing's happened, I'll be back. Don't worry.
I don't want it to be three years and that, that, and as, as a sheriff Stan Cog, I, I truly understand that it's horrible to think that sometimes when you want these projects to get done overnight, they're ten years out. One thirty two is a perfect example of something that has been even before my time. Thirty years in, in, in conversation and finally to open up one thirty two. So I, I totally understand that. This is the reason why I responded to you in that way. And the last but not least, I think that is very important that, like you said, what are, how are the citizens seeing all the projects that we are, we are finishing? I think a sign is important as well because communication is, goes different ways, either social media, newspaper and or physical. And we've been told at Stan Cog that we need to do a better job. So I agree. I agree. And you know, at the end of the day, I think this council agrees with you. So I just wanted to say thank you very much.
And I want to thank the council because I did hear from almost all of you. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Is there anything else? Oh, that's right. Were you on the grand, the grand jury, sir? severe. That was, that wasn't actually that was exactly who pointed out to us who wanted more was the grand jury. So just so you know. Okay, just so you know. Thank you. You had a question? And I see two buttons pushed, one number nine zero is right. Casey.
Alex, I had a question. Uh, how were these roads picked? Was there a specific, uh, set of requirements? Is the, the order they were put in? Not the big original roads, the, I guess. Did you say that?
Each, each road is given, given it what's called a pavement condition index. So we do a review and jump in, Kevin, if, if I'm off base. So we do a review of those. They're assigned a number, um, and we develop the maintenance program base, based on that number.
And may I jump in? That's it's not the only, only thing that we go on. I mean, you know, if you look at the presentation, uh, we consider, you know, of course, the existing pavement condition and the PCI number. But we also look at scheduled maintenance, uh, operations with Public Works. We're looking at public requests and complaints that we receive. We, we, we note those. We also, uh, look for funding, like on Morgan, we got six different grants to get that done and we combined a lot of work to make it more efficient. And then, uh, of course, we always are considering land development and future growth and how that's going to be affected. So there's more than just the PCI number that we, we utilize. And, uh, again, the goal is to save the roads that are good, uh, address the ones that are failing and work the ones in the middle, uh, with Public Works to, uh, you know, keep, keep the, uh, you know, the pavement long lasting at least as much as our funding will allow. So that's basically what and where are we at? I think five street personnel and, uh, they're out every day trying to fix potholes and things like that or sign, stop signs. So, um, I, I really appreciate former Mayor Vera's comments and that, uh, I think that he will find that we will be addressing those issues this summer. So I hope to have a, a, a good report from him back next time.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yes, Ms. Vera, you had a question? My apologies.
Yeah, with the adjustments, the funding you stated, we would get one point two million instead of the two million, um, which is quite a bit of a difference. Is this going to be enough to cover the areas that you have outlined? Are you going to also request additional funding through our funds?
I believe it will. I mean, we're, we're trying to get the bit, at most bitter. So we're going to, we're going to find out exactly what we do. But with all public projects, what you do is if you get a bid that's more than your estimate, you're going to have to reduce some scope. Okay, so we will adjust the scope as we need to, to fit the budget and the funding available. So and then we'll put it on the list for the next year. So what we do is we roll over these or, or these pavement projects. And it's basically, we're following, we're following the strategy that they give us in this manual from the Stan Cog, I mean, the Stanislaus Council of Governments. They give us the program to run. So we're not getting our, a new program. We're just following what they have.
And is this why Mayor Vera's road has been delayed multiple times because of this situation?
Well, I think that there was a pavement management program that was formed, uh, not last year, but before. And I think every year before that they addressed it. So we only had the one And I think every year before that they addressed it. So we only had the one, one year where we did Morgan instead of all the, uh, resurfacing because we had a great opportunity due to this, uh, the work in conjunction with the point, I think it was 2.8 million dollars worth of grants that we would have lost if we didn't put the full measure of funding against it. So we were able to, you know, utilize, uh, you know, just the series of grants. And our grant consultant is looking for new projects. We're city managers constantly sending me emails of, you know, opportunities that he hears. And we work it and, uh, we see if we can actually put together the applications.
Okay. Thank you very much. Unless there's any additional questions or comments.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one thing to Kevin's remarks? Uh, this is all depends on the, uh, on the oil index. The, uh, the cheaper the oil is, the more projects we could do, the more we could, we could do. Based on the list that Kevin is presenting tonight. I'd say based on the oil index, we could do maybe one third of these, these roads. So, I mean, that depends on the, how much gas is down there.
That's good information. Okay. Well, unless there's any comments from the council, this was strictly informational only, correct? There is no action required. And unless there's any additional comments from the public, we'll move on to council referrals. Mr. Martinez, you have a council refer, I believe. You remember the referrals, CYB? That's, this is where we want to do it. Yes, sir.
So then make a referral that one of us become the, uh, liaison for CYB.
Nubia, real quick, does that need to be agendized? Obviously first referral and then we'll bring it back to the council.
Yes. At the next meeting, we'll make sure it's on the agenda for formal action.
Yeah. So you can go ahead and make the referral.
Yeah. So then I'll make that referral. And then also I have one more. Is it, is it possible to review the Burtalotti contract with leaf and lame issue? I know as, as, as many Christmas trees as there are still in our town. As the weather's getting better, I'm seeing more and more piles of leaves and branches being cut that aren't being picked up. So this issue is only going to get worse. And I would like to revisit that contract and see how we can address that issue.
Yeah, but not for me on that. Also, we're good with that one too? And we're good with the CYB referral and then we're good with this new referral. And then council member, unless you have anything else, Martinez, Ms. Viera? How many referrals you have today?
I think I mentioned to you before, um, and I've brought this up before regarding the homeless in town and trying to do something and try to address the issues that we have in town. Um, over the weekend I had a homeless person come up to me and hit my car and yell verbal assinities to me. Um, obviously they were under the influence or of not sound mind. So, um, clearly if it's happening to me while waiting for my son to get off of work in my vehicle. And this is the second incident I've had in the shopping center with a unhoused person. I would like to see if we can, I don't know where the status is. I know I've brought up Turning Point a few times to see if we can get a better collaboration to address, people that are suffering here or unhoused or other situations that we have here in town.
And just to clarify, we're referring to some, receiving some information of what we're doing now and it would be sufficient enough. Just so you know what we're doing now as a city and then possibly have a conversation about what we can do.
Yeah.
Kind of what we're looking at?
Yeah. Cause I know, uh, CDVG funds and ESG funds, emergency shelter grant can be used to address some of these situations. Uh, CB, CTPG, which we discussed earlier, can also be used for code enforcement. Um, so I would like to see if we can do something, um, if Turning Points is coming out, if we have that already, I believe. Um, I reached out to Raul and I believe he was going to reach out to Lieutenant Perry or Johnson. Um, I just didn't have an update if they're doing anything, if we're not doing anything. Um, I just know that after they, this is the second, the first time they actually put hands on me. This time they just put hands on my car. I was locked inside, was not going to get out of my car. Um, but if this is happening to me, how many other peoples are happening? And what are we doing as a council and as a city to address this situation here in our community? Cause it is happening. It has happened to me now twice in the same shopping center. I'm in there frequently because my son works there and Hatch Road is a very large intersection for us and a very large um, income or tax base for us. And I would like to make sure we're just keeping our citizens and even the employees inside the store safe. Um, so I would like to see what's going on, if we can do something, if something has already been done, I would love to hear what we're doing.
So as for clarification, I'm sorry, were you guys going to make a comment? Just want to make sure.
I can comment on that, Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Um, I know our, uh, code enforcement team has reached out to, I believe it's Raul from probation with that team. Uh, they're all having collaborative meeting, I believe next Tuesday on that to formulate a game plan. On how we can maybe work on some extra issues.
So that, that shows the public that we are engaged and I applaud the department for doing that. I know there's been conversations in the background too. And thank you, Ms. Viera, because she is absolutely right. So when the opportunity comes and the time is right, we'll receive a report from you guys and I, I greatly appreciate that. Are you okay with that? Council member?
Yes. And, um, just talking today, one last thing with, um, Anna, with the deputy director, I don't remember the rest of her name. Uh, so Nicholas, she had mentioned that the shelters haven't been full. Now that the weather's nice, so we can actually have our unsheltered actually go into those shelters instead of camping out in front of the stores where we have people working. So I don't know what we're doing or what we're, what our process is. Um, to have them go out to those locations, them at least sheltered so they're not attacking my car.
That's, that's a Modesto, right? Okay. She was just mentioning the resources that is available in Modesto Salvation Army and, okay. Salvation Army. That's correct. Correct. Okay. With that being said, is there any additional referrals? Moving on to reports, I have no reports. Council members? Yeah, you have, go ahead, Brett.
Sure. This will be the first of many on this subject, uh, June 13th, first Tuesday night of concerts in the park. Uh, this is kind of the save the date reminder. And we're going to start out the first week with our own Greg Scudder and the Honky Tonk Heroes sponsored by Sam's Cafe. So signs will go up here next week and then, uh, we're getting, we're getting ready. And also in two weeks, the street fair. So everybody prepare. Weather's going to be nice, supposed to be hot. Uh, there'll be 20,000 people in a town. Looking forward to a great event once again.
Thank you for that. Any additional ones? Well.
Yes, I, I had one. Uh, it's unfortunate that they both left, but this past weekend or the 15th, I'm sorry, not this past weekend, the 15th was the opening day, uh, ceremonies for CYB. CYB had somebody coming out to do the flag presentation and the last minute they, they had to cancel. I was contacted. I was able to get ahold of Mr. Warren on Friday night. And he set up me with, uh, Dave Pratt and Steve Whitney. And those two gentlemen, uh, showed up and did a flag presentation for the youth. So I just wanted to thank them again. Unfortunately they left, but I do appreciate that. Uh, and that's the only thing I had to report.
And I just want to add, uh, thank you, Fallon, for last minute cooking up that certificate for CYB. And I couldn't be there for the whole thing. And I just wanted to say I was there in the morning and Mr. Martinez took care of it. And I think that's awesome.
Actually, I think I put that one out.
What? Really? You lied to me.
Geez.
You, you're not looking at me saying you're not pointing.
I was being reserved.
Can I, can I remake that statement? I would like to thank Alex for putting together that certificate on such a short notice. That's all that matters. It's team. Um, on to the next. Council member?
All right. I'm trying to make this quickly as possible. I don't see Tamra here, uh, for an update on the job fair on July 6th. Um, I know she has some info, more information, I'm sure somewhere. Um, EDAC meetings coming up this week on the 27th. Um, it'll be, so the, um, SIDS is currently posted because I know there is a 30 day requirement for review. So I would definitely want to encourage anyone who's interested in the comprehensive economic development strategies for the county to go ahead and take a look. Um, tomorrow, right? We're going to have, um, the small business workshop, um, from step. And we also have the drug, um, awareness with the school district will be here in this building tomorrow. They'll also be addressing some of the issues as fentanyl that was brought up earlier in the meeting. And then the Saturday, as you know, it's love series, but they also have free tax preparation here in this building, the United Way. Um, that will be one of their last days. So please, there's a flyer in the lobby with a QR code. Joey can probably point it out if you go by there. Um, so you can sign up for an appointment. They are doing free preparation and free tax files. Yeah. Just the love series. And also the partnership with Sherry's partnership. We actually have the annual mental health, the workshop coming up May 11th here in this building. We do have Ele Hunter from Telemundo who will be, um, helping. We also have a speaker from Golden Valley. He'll be here doing blood pressures and diabetes checks. Thank you.
Council member Casey?
No, I, the only report I have is, we, we just have to improve our communication to our citizens. Uh, we have public workshops to have input. I had the, the opportunity to attend the public workshop last week and there was one public person there. The answer I get is that it's on social media. Um, I can tell you it, it doesn't work. We need to improve the communication to the people who pay all of our salaries. I don't know what the answer is, but we need to work toward that. That's my only report.
Thank you very much. City manager.
Nothing in this evening there.
City attorney.
Nothing this evening there.
Anyone from the departments? See you none. I don't, I don't believe the county supervisor is online. We will now adjourn to this, we, we will now adjourn this meeting and go into closed session for a conference regarding a public employee performance evaluation. California Government Code Section 54957 titled City Manager. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on regarding this closed session item? See you none. After the closed session, I will run, return to report out. Thank you.
We need videos too.
Yes.
We have given direction to staff. Thank you.
Thank you.